I suppose we're playing football, not six feet apart, and also not wearing masks. So if they get to say that they can do that out of problem, it should not be on most wear a mask on the playground.
Very interesting, John.
It was unprepared, I didn't either.
Right up, maybe I got for you. Most things, you said side off of that. Won't get two or three of them all in that mistake. This is not for school board meeting, but every one of you. No need for either. All of you, you know, you're failing your job. You're failing. Kids, let me tell you something about it. Mine's always game about your parents. See, they don't have like these, he's very, I don't know, impressed about what he makes us do. Because he has no social in Iraq.
He's not learning a whole hell of a lot either. And I get a feeling, and I did a little bit of research, I get a feeling the teachers are driving this a little bit. And if they're doing that, you need to get them to stop doing that. You need to start putting these kids. You need to start putting these kids. And first. The CDC has said it's safe to return to school. Take mitigated measures, which nobody disagrees with. The federal government in charge of diseases says it's safe to return to school. You have no science backing your decision, what you're doing right now. There's no science. You need to get it together. You're damaging these kids. It can be done safely. Social distancing, maybe a week on, week off, whatever. But we're all living through this danger. You got a sheriff's deputy standing right there. Do you, how many of you heard of a sheriff's deputy? I can't come to work because it's too dangerous because of COVID. I'm sure a lot of the teachers, they go to restaurants, they go to the grocery store. That's just as dangerous, go Home Depot. That's just as dangerous. Put the kids first. Put them first.
Thank you, Mr. McGowan. Ms. Rita McGowan?
No, you don't have to wipe it down.
No, no.
No, ma'am.
She must wipe it down.
I'm going to piggyback off of what my husband said. All of you are failing my child. All the teachers are failing my child. You give them snow days. They can't bother to work from home and teach our children. You can't bother to put them back in school when you can put the kindergarten through two back in school. You can let the football players go out on the field and practice. You can let kids get in cars and practice how to drive with a teacher. But yet you can't put my child back in school. At all. But yet the teachers can go out and go to dinner. They can go to Home Depot. They can shop. They can do whatever the hell they want, but they can't teach our kids in school. Why? Which one of you have a medical degree? Tell me, do you, Dr. Benson? No, you have a PhD. Do you, Mr. Collins? Do you, Ms. Tolliver? Do you? Do you? Do you? No, none of you do. So why are you not listening to the CDC and NIH? Who? Those individuals actually have medical degrees. And they're saying children are not spreaders. No, you have your teachers actually physically coming into the schools, teaching my child. But yet you can't bring my child into the school. What? Why? Because? Why? No, you just, you just can't. You know what? All of you can easily be replaced. Remember that. You can be replaced. And it's my job now to replace every single one of you. Remember this face? Because it's my job to replace all of you. Yeah, you can't bother to look at me, can you, Dr. Benson? No, remember, I am going to replace you with someone else. Because you can't bother to stand up to the Virginia Education Association. No, we are in a right to work state. If these teachers don't want to work, find somebody else who is capable. Find someone else. There are so many unemployed people who are willing to work with degrees. Hire them. I want to work. I have a business degree. I will teach these children. Hire them. I'm done with you people. Get our kids back to school now.
Thank you, Ms. McGowan. Next up, we have Mr. Alex Dunn.
Last, last spring, just before COVID, was starting to become a serious topic. I came before the school board to discuss many benefits of children participating in National Bring Your Child to Work Day. And that, to my surprise, a rule was changed that made participating in the event an unexcused absence. I was wondering, as we look towards the future, if participating in National Bring Your Child to Work Day could once again be an excuse to absence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Mr. Vance, do we have any public comment online? Four. Okay, it looks up like first we have Mr. Brandon Haga.
Yes, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Hello? Can you, can anybody hear me? Hello, can anybody hear me? I don't know what to do. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, sorry, thank you. Hey, good evening, my name is Brandon. I'm an active duty military member stationed in DC and have been a King George resident since 2009. I'm here today to speak on behalf of the voiceless and this board's lack of leadership. Although your lack of action wasted six months of my second graders' life. I recently am grateful that I had the ability to place her on a bus and instantly witness the natural excitement, energy, and life pumped back into her seven-year-old body that had been stolen from her as she climbed on those, those bus steps. To be fully transparent, I'm a foster parent and adoptive father of three through the system. Much like my children who experience things no child in this country should ever go through, I too did not have it so great. Like them, I spent my childhood in courtrooms, court-appointed counseling, and spent lots of nights with cop cars sitting in my driveway. Of all my negative experiences, school was my sanctuary. It was a place where I could breathe, be a kid, and not worry about the unknown of home life. I say that to say this, there are kids all over this county that all of you represent that are currently, this is a fact, undergoing torment, physical, mental, and even sexual abuse during the hours. They should be in the only sanctuary they have, which is school. With some of your personal agendas and votes backed by zero science, whether you want to take responsibility or not, you all own that. Your decisions and lack thereof have directly impacted this category of children in ways that you will never know. To the two of you that have been advocating for the back-to-school in-person slash virtual option, thank you for at least having a backbone and speaking for all parties in this community, and not just for the fortunate and privileged, that's what, that's been done so over the last eight months. To the superintendent, sir, people in your profession all across this country, and even in this state, have figured this out on way less than your $168,000 annual salary and with way less resources. What makes you any different? To the board members stated back in November, what is another month referring to a delay? Only proved that children are not your priority. To those that sit on this board and continuously cosign that type of behavior and continue to fail the unknown amount of youth in this community whose pain and screams, I say again, whose pain and screams that will continue to go unheard as the doors are shut to school, for the school, on behalf of those kids that you continue to private their only sanctuary in life right now for them, which is school. I can only hope and pray that you have sleepless nights, knowing that your decisions have directly contributed to their agony and will continue to do so until you vote to open the doors to all ages. Time is ticking, and these kids are at your mercy.
Thank you, Ms. McGowan.
Either keep or be a leader.
All right, next we have Ms. Yvonne Richard.
Good evening. My name is Yvonne Richard, and I'm a resident of King George, a teacher and a parent. Last week, King George County experienced our first real snowstorm in about two years. However, not everyone was able to fully enjoy the snow. Some very thoughtful elementary teachers posted work which included touching the snow and exploring the properties of snow by actually playing in the snow. Thank you to them. Middle school students and high school students were not as lucky to get those types of assignments. Additionally, teachers had to post material for our students to do asynchronously. I understand that our district must meet certain numbers of required hours of instruction for the state each year. However, I also know that this year has been challenging for everyone, and while meeting those hours is incredibly important, so is the mental health of our students and our staff. I would have, it would have been wonderful to have just one of those days as a good old-fashioned snow day with no work to be done by students and no work to be posted by staff. Many teachers had to read angry comments from parents all over social media about how it was our fault that their students had to have an asynchronous day and complete work. Perhaps a better explanation could be provided by the board about how instructional hours are calculated so that the anger and frustration about the asynchronous times could be taken off of the teachers and staff who are simply trying to do our job. I would also like to say thank you for creating a dashboard showing the COVID-19 cases in King George County schools. I've tried to view it today, but most of the chart is hidden from view. It is unfortunate that it's only updated once a month, and it doesn't provide families with the most up-to-date information. Many districts are updating daily or weekly at minimum. I also noticed it doesn't show if we've had outbreaks within our district or not. Does that indicate that we've had, not had any outbreaks in King George County schools, or we're just not reporting that information? I hope in the future that the dashboard can be updated more regularly and can be fixed so that the entire dashboard is viewable to the public. Finally, I was pleased to see in the presentation that staff will get their step increase and a cost of living increase next year. I hope this is something the school board will ensure that all staff will get, as these are very important pieces of compensation, and will help keep the experienced teachers that we currently have in King George County schools continuing to work for us. I also hope that the lack of compensation last year and the experiences that we've had this school year will not cause teachers to leave our county and the profession altogether. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richard. Next, we have Ms. Patricia Brackbill.
Can you hear me now? I'm sorry, it just.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry. In 1944, renowned psychologist Abraham Maslow published his model for the hierarchy of the needs. This pyramid model, based on years of research and observation, illustrates his theory of the pattern through which human motivations generally move. According to Maslow's theory, a person's psychological, physiological, safety, and emotional needs need to be met before they can reach self-actualization, or in other words, when they are motivated to learn or to work for anything new. For example, if a child feels scared or is hungry, he will not be ready to learn any new material. So as a community, if we don't meet the basic needs of our students first, then any type of instruction is an exercise in futility. Our children must first create relationships with us, feel safe and cared for in their humanity, before they are ready to learn. These are the basics of Education 101. Although the circumstances of the worldwide pandemic are out of all of our hands, and we have done what we could with these circumstances, the price is now being paid by our children. There are still things we can do within our community to meet those basic needs of our most vulnerable, our children. I have witnessed firsthand in the past two months, a marked decrease in student engagement. I have changed the way I have taught. I've changed the way that I've presented material. I've tried to keep things more organized and easier for them to access, but it's not enough. These children are secluded from their peers and their community. They are no longer, they no longer have any desire to perform in school. You see, their basic needs of humanity are not being met, and therefore they do not have the motivation to succeed academically. Children are shutting down, parents are at a loss, and this is a dangerous place to be for the mental and emotional health of an entire generation. But there is something more we can do. Staff has been given the opportunity to begin vaccinating, the ionization systems are installed, class changes have been made to the most recent parent survey in order to expedite the process of transition, transition to the hybrid model. Members of the board, by voting to return in-person instruction, we are doing the best thing we can for our community's children and our community's future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brackbill. Next, Ms. Rachel Scott.
Hello?
We can hear you.
My name is Rachel Scott, and I am a parent of a daughter at King George Elementary and Kindergarten. In January, she returned to in-person learning, and we are very thrilled and excited that she could do that and have the opportunity to learn face-to-face with her teacher and alongside her classmates. I ask that you bring back the rest of the student body quickly. Our children need in-person learning, all of them, not just K through two. Statewide and locally, cases are decreasing, and teachers that wanted a vaccine have had the opportunity to be vaccinated and will soon be getting the second dose. They already have a high level of protection from the first dose. Masks, hand washing, and social distancing, which are currently being implemented with the students that are, that are already in-person, is successful in mitigating the spread of COVID-19. All of these things should be able to help us bring back our students quickly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Mr. Vance, does that conclude our online public comment? Yes, okay. So at this time, we will move on to changes to the agenda. Are there any changes to this evening's agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to change the agenda for a discussion item for in-person learning.
My second.
All right, it has been motioned and seconded that we add a discussion item for a return to in-person learning. Mr. Collins, would you like to discuss?
Well, we made a promise to the constituents to have that on the agenda every time until we return in the person. So. I'm going to keep that promise fulfilled.
Okay. Any other discussion?
This is just for the agenda change.
Just for the agenda change? Okay. So I would just add that as a part of our packet, we did see that there is a discussion and a recommendation by Dr. Benson pertaining to return to in-person learning. So I would say that it is actually on the agenda as a discussion item at this point in time, albeit under a different name, but the discussion will occur. Any other comments?
So then when we're discussing the modality matrix, we're not going to be limited as to what we can discuss? Because there's a little bit more than just the modality aspect that needs to be discussed about returning to the, returning to in-person learning.
So if, any additional comments? I would point out that as a part of the packet, which we were provided in advance of the meeting, under the, in King George County Schools Instructional Modality Matrix Update, there is in fact a discussion and recommendation at the end that is pertaining to an in-person return for additional students. I've seen a reason why we could not discuss it at that point in time, as it is a part of that agenda item.
Madam Chair, that, that's true, it's on there, and, and, and I'm not remiss that I didn't see that. I requested three times by email to have this in-person discussion as an in-person item on our discussion. We said we were going to do it. We said we're going to do it over and over. So what I heard from the comments from our last meeting was that there was no, this from not only the folks in my district, but the folks in districts everywhere, that there, there was no, no discussion about in-person return. So people look at the agenda. That's, that's what they want to see, and I don't understand why that when requested to put the item on the agenda three times, it wasn't added.
It's also a matter of transparency, because especially now that, I mean, this is a perfect example, because our website was down. So a lot of people couldn't even see the agenda. And then when they did get, the agenda was out there, then they didn't know that under the modality matrix that that would actually be discussed.
So actually, under the board packet, which was in fact posted with, along with the agenda, they did have access to the information in the Instructional Modality Matrix Update.
Not everybody actually used that prior to. I'm just saying, I had a lot of complaints, wondering why we weren't talking about it.
Okay, well, we think we've had a decent discussion. Ms. Tolliver, Ms. Hawk, any additional comments? All right, let's call a vote. So those in favor of adding an action or a discussion item to discuss in-person learning? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Opposed?
I think it's already on there.
I agree. Okay, Chair votes aye, we will add a discussion item after the, at the end of the discussion items. So an item D will add a discussion item.
Madam Chair, may I suggest at this point that we, on item B, Instruction Modality Matrix Update, simply put a slash, return to school discussion. Dr. Benson, is that appropriate with your, with your modality report?
I guess the board's approved the separate discussion item. I would only recommend maybe you make it item C, so that it seems like a logical place to transition from an in-person discussion.
I think that's an excellent plan.
Correct, right to that, to that item.
Okay.
So we can substitute item C for?
Yep. In-person learning.
In-person learning.
Okay. All right, so without objection, we will add item C, in-person learning, to the discussion items. All right. Okay, so next, moving on to action items, we have an action to approve policy J E C R dot two, Addendum to Administer Modality Preference During COVID-19 Pandemic. Sir, I'm sorry, I skipped the, I know, I'm sorry, I skipped the consent agenda. Sorry, so back, backing up one item here. So next we have the consent agenda, so the minutes for the December 14, 2020, regular meeting minutes. I have a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So move.
So Madam Chair, do we have to, when, when the item comes up, do we need to have the chair forward their wishes by a motion to approve? Do we just have a motion to whoever's going to make the motion to either approve or not approve it? Instead of.
Certainly.
Laying out the groundwork?
Certainly. I'm sorry, I didn't understand that.
Instead of saying have a motion to approve December 14, 2020 meeting, just say, do you have any motions?
Motion. Calling for a motion, not a.
Well, do we have a motion? The chair, the chair's job is to, is to present the item.
I understand.
Okay, so it is, so, so it is actually, it is customary to, to, I mean, the consent agenda is, is for action? So, okay, duly noted. All right, so do we have any motions pertaining to the consent agenda?
What's the difference? I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. All right, now moving on to action item pertaining to policy J E C R dot two, Addendum to Administer the Modality Preference During COVID-19 Pandemic. Do I have any motions pertaining to this action item?
I move we approve policy J E C R two. Second.
All right, it is moved and seconded that we accept, or we approve the policy J E C R dot two. Any discussion? All right, we'll call a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, what was that, Ms. Pence here?
Aye.
Aye, okay, Chair votes aye, motion carries. Now we will move on to the, this evening's discussion items. So first we have the discussion item A, Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Award. Turn it over to Dr. Benson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I was informed by way of the Virginia State Superintendent of Public Instruction Memo 012-21 that King George County Schools is eligible for an additional, additional distribution of monies associated with the Coronavirus Relief Fund. These are federal funds, also called CARES II. We anticipate being eligible for $1,371,409. So this evening, as part of the agenda item and in the public, in the packet, the acceptable uses for these funds are included. For this evening, I'm just asking that you consider acceptance of these funds so that we can purpose them for appropriate use in the future. Our county organizes and coordinates the financial transactions that would be associated with these funds if the board chose to accept them to establish that account. They simply need a motion approved by this school board to accept those funds as they're made available to us. Happy to answer any questions, but thank you for your consideration.
Dr. Benson?
Yes.
Since I don't have it in front of me, would you restate the amount of the award, please?
Sure, the, the award would be $1,371,409.
Thank you.
I should also mention, just for our public, that these funds could be used from March 13, 2020. In other words, they could be used for any expenses incurred since the beginning of the pandemic through September 30, 2023.
All right, any additional questions for Dr. Benson? Comments, discussion?
As far as the discussion, this discussion item, I would, I looked over the superintendent's memo 012-21 and the uses for that money. If we show appropriate next time, I just want to bring in some things that could be useful. There's bullet point three, where it provides principals and other leaders with the resources necessary to, for address school needs. Potomac Elementary, the educational cottages need to be completed. It looks like that would fall under that one. And the last three bullets, school facilities repair improvements, name on operations, schools reduce the risk of virus transmission, maintenance, repair, and replacement, upgrade projects to improve the indoor air quality. the indoor air quality and then the clinical and non-clinical, and eating, reading and other activities that are necessary to maintain operation of continuing of services. So I would suggest that some of that money be placed towards that project. That's my only discussion item on that.
Okay, any additional comments? Um, Dr. Benson, when do you need the board to approve and accept the, the um, the CARES two award amount?
I guess it's not really time sensitive. We just um, as soon as we can, I guess that allows the county to set up the accounts that when the funds are received for eligible costs, they can be processed appropriately.
Okay, so if it were on the next regular meeting agenda as an action item, that would be appropriate?
That's fine.
Okay.
Could we get a list of what the um, lieutenant expenses are?
So I do not believe, I believe, uh, Dr. Benson just needs a motion to accept it and the plan at that point in time would not be to discuss the use. Is that correct?
Yeah, I would, um, I'm certainly happy to take any input the board may have in terms of potential uses. Um, I would just say that we've got um, I think on purpose, it's by design, the allowable use runs through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Um, undoubtedly, most recently, we've heard um, we've heard discussion from our governor about um, you know, augmented opportunities for students to try to uh, address any learning loss. Uh, we've talked about already about how we as a county or as a school division will need to um, provide additional resources in the future and not simply a, a few weeks extra, uh, perhaps for select students or for those that would choose to attend, but you know, there's going to be a significant amount of, of looping back of resources needed in our schools when we do return to in-person, um, not just for the rest of the school year, but in the coming years. So I say all of that to, to kind of ask for the board to give us an opportunity to try to address or to utilize this funding in a more formative way, not necessarily commit um, quickly to expending all the funding, but to allow us an opportunity to let needs reveal themselves and then have this funding available to us to then utilize to address those needs as they, as they are revealed. I hope, I, you know, it's tough for me to kind of have a crystal ball, but I do anticipate we'll have expenses in the coming fiscal year or two uh, to try to address that. So that's the only consideration I would um, offer to the board. We're certainly happy. Any immediate ideas or immediate needs, we know, we can certainly bring those to you. But if the intention is to ask for a, a comprehensive, how are we going to spend all of the funding, then I'd have to respectfully request that we um, take time to think that through or allow those, those future needs to, to come about.
I, I would not be interested in having that, that money, that one million, three hundred seventy-seven thousand to be a supplemental to a budget for three years. In other words, um, plugging that in for short, shortfalls that might, might occur. Or that, that's going to be a reoccurring of spends. This is um, a one-time money. Um, so it should be used for those, those type of things. And that's why, one of the reasons I brought up that information is, there's many things that can be spent on, but that, that was one of mine. I would like to see a list still of what is proposed to spend money. I'm sure that will be ongoing and changing, but we had to start somewhere.
I, I guess I'm a bit confused as to the fact that we're addressing where it's going before we have accepted the money.
Right, this, it was in discussion. I was just mentioning that for discussion.
The discussion is certainly um, or will be appropriate. And I think uh, since it has been opened, Madam Chair, if, if uh, we may make some tentative comments, uh, I feel very, very strongly that Dr. Benson is absolutely straight on in terms of the need becoming apparent to address the learning loss. We have heard several, to, to put it mildly, several um, notable uh, situations of learning loss, of uh, emotional well-being loss, of physical well-being loss. Um, I, I think we are, and, and we'll be looking to the staff for ways to address all of these issues. And I think we would be absolutely remiss if we discuss or talk about using money which came about as a result of the, the pandemic issues. If we turn around and use that money for capital expenditures, then I, I think that's a dereliction of duty. And, and I want to say clearly right now, I, I think we're going to have needs that are, are individual and mass and grade level and will require a great deal of intervention over the next one to three years and, and probably longer. So I, I think as we uh, anticipate accepting this money, then we should plan on having it spent uh, to remediate and uh, manage students' needs.
Okay, so more to, Ms. Collins?
I, I would agree that, that money should be used also for that, but I would caution you to say that it's a dereliction to use it to, to create more space. So you can have the six-foot um, area down at Potomac Elementary and for a capital project that fits into the superintendent's memo, memo on six occasions. I would not call that a dereliction. I would call that good management, but we'll discuss these in the future.
We will.
And, and I do take um, I take that as um, you know, a hurtful thing to say that I would be derelict my duties by putting it into a capital improvement plan.
So be it.
Okay, so at our next meeting, we will have a motion to accept the coronavirus CARES money, at which point in time a proposal will be put forward for further discussion. Be after that point in time. Okay, so moving on, our next discussion item is the instructional modality matrix update. Dr. Benson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. As we've done in previous meetings, I just bring to you uh, an update as promised in terms of the uh, modality metrics. And just for the public, just to recap, several meetings ago, we approved, this board approved, the usage of a modality matrix which places uh, variables associated with our local health district, uh, health metrics along the, the X-axis along the top. And along the Y-axis, we self-assess our capacity, uh, or the impact uh, on our capacity to deliver uh, in-person instruction uh, with regards to, uh, to factors that have been determined along that, that Y-axis. So um, again, this evening I bring to you, and I place as a handout, as promised, uh, the updated uh, local metrics. The good news that I've seen is that um, the case incidence, it seems, as well as the positivity rate, continue to inch uh, in, in the, in a, in a direction that is better. Uh, not only for King George County, but for our surrounding counties uh, that are in our local health district. Uh, so I hope you've noticed that as I have provided you update each time I, I provide it. Generally, there's a few exceptions, but generally case incidence and positivity continues to regress, uh, albeit at a, at a rather slow pace, but um, that nonetheless is good news. Uh, our impact as far as our staffing remains uh, in the moderate category. Uh, so accordingly, right now, um, the recommendation uh, is to remain immediately um, with just our priority learners. And I want to clarify to make sure that our public knows that uh, the terminology priority learners does not, uh, is, is a term that we have um, taken directly from the Virginia State Department of Education. Uh, we simply use that terminology to indicate that includes students, our youngest learners, uh, students who receive services through ESOL, and some of our students who receive services through special education. Uh, so I want to clarify that tonight because I've re, received a few emails um, asking about where that terminology came from and how it's being used in the context of this pandemic. But nonetheless, I will, and I, I know our public speakers, some of them mentioned, um, I want to reach out and thank all of those who have been involved and continue to be involved in the vaccine effort here in King George, um, those who have received their first doses, um, including myself, I'm sure very impressed with the organization, um, with the efficiency, uh, and with the willingness of so many to come together to um, to provide that first dose of vaccine for those employees of our school division who chose to take it. We are scheduled um, for the week of the fifteenth. I think it's now the, the last part of that week, the eighteenth and nineteenth, for um, the second dose to be administered. So by the end of next week, then all employees in our school division who chose, uh, will have received their second dose. But I say that to try to lay kind of a foundation for the logic behind the recommendation that I want to make to this board tonight. I think that the um, the trend that we're seeing in terms of health metrics, I hope continues. And I hope the pace of that trend uh, would correspond with a post-two week from the second dose of vaccine for employees, at which time, you know, my best information is that that's when full immunity or full resistance to the coronavirus uh, would be achieved, that those two events come together uh, and allow me to recommend to this board that we look at bringing our third through sixth graders back, uh, forwarding those who choose in-person learning beginning on March fourth. March fourth, I believe, is a Thursday. Uh, that would allow us one blue gold, one, one blue day, one gold day, so to speak. To assess the effectiveness of our transportation routes and those types of things. And if we needed to adjust, we would have Saturday and Sunday to adjust routes, communicate with families uh, so that the next week in full, then we could um, we could enter knowing that we can transport uh, and host our third through second, or sixth graders, uh, albeit on the hybrid schedule that was proposed to this board some time ago. I'd also recommend that we look to bring back for those who choose our students in grades seven through twelve. It would be helpful uh, to us to be able to begin that in-person opportunity to quickly allow that to coincide with the fourth nine weeks. It's an obvious and logical transition time when students would complete uh, their third nine weeks course uh, assignments. And then we could do any transition we would need in terms of staffing. As a result of the, the virtual hybrid uh, breakup, we could do that to begin the fourth nine weeks. So it's a logical breakpoint. It's one that coincides, I think nicely with um, you know, a week after the, the spring break that's planned. And so for those reasons, I would recommend to this board again, that we begin in-person for those who choose for grades three through six, uh, March fourth, twenty twenty-one, and that we begin in-person for those who choose at the secondary level, grades seven through twelve, uh, March twenty-ninth. And again, that's the beginning of the fourth nine weeks of our school year. Happy to answer any questions you may have, or if you'd rather um, address them under your next agenda item. It's up, up to the board.
Any discussion, questions, comments for Dr. Benson? All right, well then, uh, if that is the case, we could continue on this conversation in, in in-person learning conversation as a discussion item.
Well, I think it's, I think it's clear that, so our past president said we need to go back to intern, in-person learning. Our current president says we need to go back to in-person learning. Virginia Senate's putting forth a bill to have required in-person learning. CDC says go back. We have football teams, basketball teams, and, and Parks and Rec participating in King George. First part of the vaccine for our staff has been completed. The second part will be done February, and then two weeks would be the first part of March. My suggestion would be um, that we go back in-person learning starting March the fourth.
Additional comments?
Yeah, so I, I just have a question, and maybe I should ask this before, but when we go back, Dr. Benson, are you proposing that we go back based on the plans that we were presented back in November, December? I don't remember what. For the middle school, the three through six, and the high school, that same plan is what you're anticipating?
I anticipate that um, again, to implement with fidelity, the mitigation uh, strategies that are part of this uh, that have been presented all along, that it would be something very similar to that. I don't want to um, I don't want to undermine any continued work. And if you, if the board were to approve tonight uh, these target dates, that obviously gives us a chance uh, to revisit with, you know, we have scheduling committees, subcommittees as part of the whole reopening committee that we could reengage, uh, allow Dr. Boyd and Ms. Collins to work with those folks and their staff to kind of re-propose or re, or refine any uh, any part of those plans that were once upon a time proposed. But I do believe the core two days per week in person would still remain, given the numbers that we would anticipate hosting. I just wouldn't want to, if there's a way that they could augment that, I wouldn't want to tell you tonight, absolutely, that's the plan we're doing, and then negate any opportunity to offer um, more than two days perhaps, if they're able to do that. I would simply want to turn around and give them the opportunity to look at the logistics, look at the um, the numbers that have chosen or indicated they would choose in-person and see what they could come back with.
So I, I think that um, I, I have a little bit of concern just solely basing all of our decisions, a majority of our decisions on the modality matrix, when we're not looking at um, some of the secondary core um, indicators and also taking into account some of the risk mitigation and also uh, extra data that's out there on schools that have in fact, been in-person and, and how their hybrid or their in-person schooling has gone um, since August. So I did do a, a little bit of research, and I have a, a slight presentation here that kind of does a King George County Core Indicator comparison that I'd like to just pass out to the board. I meant to try to get it out to you guys this weekend, but I wasn't still fighting some um, personal emergency issues. But I think that, you know, uh, as, as always in some of the other school districts I've looked at, Louisa and Prince George County, you know, because of their demographics are very similar and, and with ours, you know, Prince George is, uh, they go, have been going back to school Monday through Thursday um, full-time since August. Um, and um, also um, Louisa has had a hybrid since August. And uh, if you look, I don't know if, if it's okay with um, Ms. Gonzalez, I did give the presentation to uh, John Vance, if he could bring it up on the screen, if we can go through it, or would you rather just review it? I think there are some good discussion items that we could have in discussing how we want to actually uh, start the in-person um, learning experience for the rest of our schools.
So I think since this was um, this is new information to us, I think it's great information. I think it would be good brought up um, as a part of a as a, as an item to review um, properly for the public in advance and in, in a future meeting.
So then I would just suggest that um, as we had agreed to in our um, organizational meeting, that we have uh, meetings every Monday until we come to an affirmative action and plan as to how and when and what that plan is going to be executed for us getting all of our schools or all of our classes back to in-person learning every Monday, having our, going back to our every Monday meetings.
Any additional comments?
Well, I, I believe the motion that was made was to have a meeting every Monday until we had a plan, and I believe we have a plan.
So what is that plan, Ms. Oliver?
It's the plan that Dr. Benson just recommended.
Well, I, I think Dr. Benson is not real uh, sure as to what that plan will be. I mean, he just said that, you know, he's not sure if it'll be two days or if it'll be what was presented, or something that they can look into if we wanted them to look into it. So I don't think that it's a set in stone kind of plan.
Nobody, also said he wanted to give an opportunity to building administrators to figure out what is the most viable for them uh, and workable at this point. I think we are looking at the hybrid model that we talked about back in the fall, that's my understanding. And if there's going to be any adjustments to that, that needs to be up to the folks who are responsible for transportation and how they can keep safe distancing in their buildings and what the numbers are going to look like for them. So I, I think the plan is to let those folks who are in charge of their buildings make the plan that we have approved or are discussing for approval to happen as Dr. Benson recommends.
So I, you know, we're doing a lot of um, you know, assuming that plans are going to be approved. Um, you know, we're being very presumptuous in saying, you know, we're, we're going to approve this next time, and we're going to approve the plan. And, you know, I, I don't think that that is is the right way to go because, you know, we don't really understand and we don't have a definitive plan. And I think that Dr. Benson's staff needs to have a little bit of guidance and understanding of what it is, of our expectations of them and present, you know, more options so that we can get more students in, if that's feasible, and have a better and have a better understanding of what risk mitigations we're going to be able to take. Because I don't think that we've had enough discussion, um, on those. As we haven't discussed, you know, how does the risk mitigation for our ionization, ionization system, you know, anything that is above and beyond what the CDC has recommended, you know, we've just kind of disregarded there's extra risk mitigations that we've done. We're just solely going on the CDC core indicator, and, you know, I think there's, could be a lot more discussion in that area.
Madam Chair?
Ms. Hawk, certainly.
I, I'd like to pick up on, uh, pieces from, from both of our, of the board members. Ms. Tolliver is absolutely correct, I believe, in, in my mind, in that, uh, the, the decision about how the return happens has got to be in the hands of the administrators and Dr. Benson and the, the staff. They truly are the, um, professionals and the artists and the technicians behind how this rolls out. Having said that, um, Ms. Pansiera, I, I don't see, I personally don't object to meeting every week if we need to further understand how the plan is coming together. And I, I, that's what I hear you saying, is that there are ideas out there. We certainly had a plan of sorts in November, but times have evolved and mitigations have evolved. And so there's no reason why we shouldn't be meeting weekly if we need to have ongoing review. I don't think that is set in stone, but I think it's perfectly appropriate.
Well, I just don't think that, you know, sitting, Dr. Benson said, you know, limiting to two days. I think that, you know, we should be able to be presented with other options, you know, as other schools have done or other districts have done. And, you know, meeting every two weeks, I mean, we are already at February eighth, we're less than a month before we could possibly getting, um, you know, the kids back on March fourth, and that's one more meeting. So I don't think that's sufficient for them to be able to present any other options that are viable.
I think that's perfectly appropriate. Again, speaking only for myself, that I'm very willing to be here, uh, for a meeting. But again, I, I, it's, it's a meeting to listen and receive information, um, that we can then, um, ask questions about in process.
May I clarify, Madam Chair? Just to, to make sure we're clear, that the night that this board approved the return to school for our elementary age students, Ms. Harris did present a plan for both K two and for three, six. So that plan is in place, has been heard by this board, specifically the secondary. We could certainly come back for the seven through twelve. Uh, the ideas that those committees, uh, come up with and the plans that those principals then are, are wanting to put in place and bring that back to you. I, I do think if you were asking for that by next Monday, you know, tomorrow's Tuesday, we typically put the packet out Thursday or Friday. Uh, that only gives them a day or two for that process. And I'm speaking specifically of the seven, twelve. You know, the recommendation to bring back seven, twelve, March twenty-ninth does give us more time than the March fourth, but we already have the plan in place for three, six, as reviewed by this board and presented by Ms. Harris that night. If that helps in terms of the timing of, of extra Monday meetings.
There is a plan for the seven, seven to twelve also, um, presented by both those principals. I make a motion that we return to in-person learning March fourth.
We're, oh, it's a discussion item.
Second it, so we can discuss it.
Do you go against what you say?
All right. It has been moved and seconded that we return to in-person learning on March fourth. Mr. Collins, would you like to discuss?
Could he elaborate on that?
Yes, please.
So we've, we've been, we've been down this road before. We have been presented, returned back to school on more than one occasion, and what the plan is. I, again, will repeat that, you know, Hanover's been in school, Fairfax going back to school. Duke Senate's going to make us go back to school. The vaccines are out. That's what everybody was waiting for. And the second round is going to happen, and then the two weeks from now would be put you in March fourth. Both the present, President of the United States and the past President of the United States said we should go to learn, we should go back. We have athletics back. That's, you know, half the school already back. And then you have Parks and Rec back. That's another half the school.
Let's not exaggerate, Mr. Collins, please.
So I'll ask Dr. Benson for the number of people that participate in Parks and Recreation, all the activities in the school, and all the sports activities that are participating. And then I'll re, um, find, refine that point. But I would say it's a large summer of students that are already in our schools. There's football going on tonight.
Outside.
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 With no masks, by the way. And, um,
Play soccer in the gyms.
In the gym. Down at the middle school, there's Parks and Rec going on. So anyhow, you know, we, we talked about, can I finish, please? We talked about the CDC and all their guidance that they've given, um, schools and the country. And now that they say, okay, you do these mitigations, which we have, you should go back to school. So that's why I make this motion. And that's, that's all I have for the discussion.
Okay. I also think it's important that, you know, we, we have an, a better understanding of when is the best time, because I, I recall we had some teachers that, you know, we had to delay it a couple of days so that they could get ready and prepared, because it was in the middle of the, of the quarters. So I don't know that, I, I mean, I'm not the expert here, but we have had people that said, you know, it didn't work out that way. So, you know, in the last nine weeks, I mean, it, I would rather see us kind of start, um, sooner than later, so that we can kind of get a better understanding, finish out, get over the bumps, and then start that final last nine weeks and a hundred percent on our feet, instead of in the first couple of weeks, or even the first half of those nine weeks, trying to figure out all of the bumps and bruises, and then only having a couple of weeks to get it right. So I, I think it would be a little bit more beneficial if we brought everybody back a little sooner and not waited until the fourth quarter.
Okay. So I've heard comments in favor of the return on March fourth. Any other comments in?
May, I guess. Another comment is for us to, uh, ask the staff to and Dr. Benson to review the school calendar. I, I certainly received a lot of comments about, uh, today being, um, a student, student holiday and Monday being a student holiday. And now we're discussing spring break being out for students. Is it feasible in discussing this plan to return to have spring break be student workdays, student teacher regular workdays?
I would caution about the changing the calendar in midway. A lot of folks, um, from my experience, plan, vacations or other type of outings or.
It's hard to plan outings when you can't go anywhere these days, Mr. Collins.
All right. So I think we've strayed.
Be surprised how many people are going places.
All right. I think we've strayed from the merits of the motion. So are there any final? Are any final comments?
So I, I would just also like to, um, state that, and I don't know if this would be part of, of what we're discussing, but, you know, I, I know that we did have a plan that was presented, um, for, you know, three through six with the K through, through two, and then also the seven through twelve. But it wasn't really, my understanding of that was quite refined. And, you know, Dr. Benson, I, I know that it would be asking a lot for your staff to say, hey, could you give us another presentation with more days or see what you can do. But, you know, we got updates today, and I think that would be, um, you know, we would, it would be our due diligence if we asked to see that presentation again, and then possibly ask your staff if they could refine it a little bit more, even if they can't get the presentation ready by Friday so that we can post it. But be able to discuss it so that we could have more questions and a little bit better understanding of what that would look like, uh, returning back to school on, um, March fourth, or if it, this doesn't pass tonight on the March twenty-ninth as well.
So just, uh, follow up on this motion. I think what people are looking for in our community is the leadership of the board, to make a decision and then follow through with it. We have discussed these plans to start school. We have done the mitigation, gotten the vaccines. It's recommended by the science and the other folks that are in control of state and federal government. So I, I would still support my original motion that we return back to school March fourth.
Mr. Collins, are you taking, are you aware that CDC still is recommending a six-foot physical distancing, three foot at a minimum? And that we don't have capacity? We don't have a physical capacity to do that?
Uh, what?
So that the CDC does.
Ms. Pansiera?
That is, the CDC is recommended with, that you can be closer with the mitigation, and I think that we have mitigated. If we only mitigate it alone with the ionization, I still think you would be, uh, have no problem with the in-person learning.
So the, the CDC does state, um, and I, I copied it down, that, you know, if after applying the core indicators described in the table below, which is the CDC, um, indicators, a school is at a medium, higher, or highest risk of transmission, it does not mean that the school cannot reopen for in-person learning, but that the risk of introduction and subsequent transmission is greater. But then it also goes to talk about the risk mitigations that are, uh, they have a whole list of additional risk mitigations that they, let's be, other than the, the first five, which, you know, I think our ionization, um, you know, are, I keep forgetting what the, the little plastic, plexiglass.
Cubicles.
Cubicle stands are, are up. Um, you know, obviously, you know, that, I think those alone are two huge risk mitigation factors that are favorable, in addition to the five key mitigation strategies that we may not be able to hit. Uh, and we can hit. The only one that we can't really hit is the social distancing. And it does even state in, in the CDC, to extent possible, with a recommendation of six feet. It doesn't say a demanding of six feet. It is a recommendation. So.
So, Mr. Collins, in response to your, um, comments made several times about federal and state government, the state governor's also made it very clear that local divisions have their own autonomy to make whatever decisions they feel are appropriate. And Ms. Pansera, maybe not, it's not, six feet is not a mandate, but, um, as I've been asked several times, how much risk are we going to assess? So I, I think that, um, there are still guidelines that we cannot maintain as far as even three feet with masks at some points in the day with students in the classroom. If you put twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four kids back in the classroom for seven hours at a time. I also disagree, Mr. Collins, that, um, the community, or the majority of the community want this, because that may be what you're hearing, but I am not hearing that. So the majority of my constituents are not complaining at this point that we're not rushing into return to in-person learning, um, without taking the time to do it in a, in an appropriate manner. Those are my comments.
Thank you. So, um, if I can make a comment, I would say that, um, you know, Dr. Benson has, you know, as the board, it is our responsibility to ensure that there is a plan in place, and it is Dr. Benson's responsibility as our superintendent to come up with that plan. And he has provided a recommendation based on what is in, what he deems to be in the best interest of our students, our staff, and the, the success of our system as a whole, um, which includes things like the logistics about transportation and all these sorts of things. So I would ask, before we continue with a vote, um, in the interest of having votes that are, um, clear and unambiguous, um, Mr. Collins, would you be interested in amending your motion from being, returning to in-person learning on March fourth to specifying specifically what in-person learning on March fourth means?
Well, I don't know how defined in-person learning, other than what it says.
So I think it would be all students based on what was presented at the last, you know, the last time, all students. I, I can't speak for him, but, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Collins?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you like to restate your motion?
I make a motion to return to in-person learning by March fourth.
For whom?
For him.
For students.
Okay.
Staff.
Okay. Okay. Miss, so may I ask, so are we, are, Mr. Collins, are you saying you would like to return on March fourth for in-person learning in the, in accordance with the plans that were previously presented by Dr. Benson for each of the schools and grades?
What I'm saying is I think that our students need to be back in school, and all the plans that are presented would fall into play at that time.
Okay.
So that's a yes.
Okay. So it is moved and seconded that we return to in-person learning on March fourth. So without further objection, call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
So March fourth, based on what was presented?
It's, so.
It doesn't make, I'm sorry. If, if the question is, and I'll be real clear, I believe that, uh, bringing all students back into, uh, a full situation of full classes, full buses, full cafeterias, is a risk and is, and none, and, and I too have looked at research.
Ms. Hawk, so we're in the midst of a vote.
Yes, I know.
I don't think that's what he said. So I, I think we need to clarify what the, the motion is.
Okay, okay. So that is what we tried to do.
And I think, Ms. Gonzalez, you had said that. So you just, but you didn't finish it. So it's, the motion is to bring the kids back March fourth, based on the plans that were presented from all of the principals back in whatever date that was when we accepted the K through. That is what he's, that is what we are.
So, Mr. Collins, is that unacceptable, is that acceptable to you, to amend your motion?
So what, what amendment are you asking for?
I don't think it's amending. I think that's what he's saying.
Was pretty clear, that we refer, return to in-person on March the fourth with those plans that are, um, that doesn't mean staggering or anything like that. That means return to in-person learning with all the mitigation, with all the plans that are already in play, to go back March fourth. Five days a week.
Okay. So it is moved and seconded that King George County Schools return to in-person learning five days a week for all students on March fourth.
And I'll, I'll vote it again. Yes.
Okay. So all in favor?
Voting again?
Yes, since we did not complete our vote.
I already said yes. Pansera said yes.
Not, not to that.
Yeah, my impression was that we were going to get students back to school based on what we had previously approved.
Okay. So that, so we're in the midst of the vote. So if that's the case, we can vote, we can reject the vote, and a, and a follow-on motion could be made at some other time. So the motion as it stands right now is that King George County Schools return to in-person learning on March fourth for all grades, five days a week. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Chair votes nay. Motion is rejected.
I'd like to make a motion that we return to school K through twelve as the plan was presented on March fourth.
Second.
As the plan was presented.
As the plan was presented.
Okay.
Second.
Second. All right. Uh, without objection, there's been plenty of discussion. All in favor of?
Madam Chair, before you vote on it, March fourth, a plan that was presented March fourth. March, March fourth is not yet happened. So I'm not sure which plan we're talking about. And just to clarify, be, before you consider passing a motion, the evening that Ms. Harris came to you, Ms. Collins and Mr. Boyd came to you, Ms. Harris laid out a plan, a schedule for grades K through six. Ms. Collins and Dr. Boyd laid out an update to you as far as in-person learning at that point, the invited students based on academic achievement or the lack thereof. I do not believe they presented to you a definitive schedule at that meeting. So I just wanted to.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure they did.
I'm not looking to debate you. I just want to caution the board that I think it would be prudent to bring the secondary principals back to then understand completely what that schedule will be.
Thank you, Dr. Benson.
May I try another motion?
Well, we've got to finish that one.
We have one on the table. So, okay, Ms. Pansier, would you please repeat your motion?
So the motion is to get all school, all kids in grades back to school, K through twelve, based on the plans that were pre, were presented with all of the principals. I do believe, I'm pretty certain that Ms. Collins and Dr., um, Boyd did present a plan of return for this, for the kids that night. So that, that is my motion, is that we start those plans. Obviously, they'll have to be tweaked a little bit, but the start date will be March fourth.
First to second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Alright, so it has been moved and seconded that King George County Schools return to in-person learning as presented by Dr. Benson and Principal's administration previously on March 4th. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Chair votes nay, motion is rejected.
May I try another motion?
We're still discussing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So I, I-
So maybe we just try to discuss it before we start making motions.
So we've been, we've been discussing?
My, my understanding, and, and I, I think we are probably saying the same thing. I don't remember there, and I haven't gone back to look in my notes. When Dr. Boyd and Ms. Harris and Ms. Collins presented, Ms. Harris clearly had a, a plan for K 2 and 3 6. And my understa, my memory, which is sometimes faulty, was that, uh, the secondary level presented their, um, return for the special populations. I don't recall them presenting a plan for the entire K 12 population. So I, I don't remember that, perhaps it did occur. However, I'm, I feel sure that, that they would be amended in some way, either up or down. So I'm going to ask, I guess, first of all, that we have, um, I mean, I guess this is a motion that we meet next week, next Monday, to hear updates from Dr. Boyd and Ms. Collins. And, uh, if they don't have time, then, then give us the point-in-time information, understanding that it will roll out. Yes, that's, that's the first motion, that we meet next Monday.
Okay, mask, could that be a, would you be willing to?
Meet next Monday is the motion?
Yes.
Second.
Second, third.
Okay, any discussion, Ms. Hawk? Okay, I was going to ask if you'd be interested in many, it's how to specify that we have a work session next Monday to discuss the plans?
That's fine. I will amend it to asking that we have a work session next Monday, uh, and ask Dr. Boyd and, and Ms. Collins, and any additional personnel that would support them, understanding that, that if we don't have rock-solid dates, et cetera, we, it will be, we need to know at this point in time what they anticipate.
Okay, so I think if I understand, it's been moved and seconded that we have a work session next Monday, February 15th, to review, what is the holiday?
It would be Tuesday.
I can be here Monday.
Wednesday.
Yeah.
Wednesday. I don't care. I just put it out.
Can anyone not do Monday?
I'm fine with Monday. I don't know how does the school work with that.
Okay.
Sir, employee holiday.
It is a holiday, I will be here, I'll be available.
May I ask Dr. Benson for his recommendation?
I, I don't, it would give an extra day or two for them. As I stated before, you know, we're, we're gonna meet tomorrow morning, um, to get anything, and I cannot promise that they're good, whatever recited presentation they come up with is gonna be in your packet Friday. But if you were to meet Wednesday, or Tuesday, or Wednesday, that does give us a little bit more time. Would help to improve the employee holiday.
The 17, 17?
Yeah, I, I think if, if Dr. Benson, if they could just even present what they had presented before as a packet with the notation that it will be, you know, updated and possibly, you know, modified, that would be perfect, because I would like to see that again. I mean, we can go back and, and pull it, but to have that part of our packet, what they originally presented, would be perfect.
So the 17, I'll amend my work session request to the 17?
Okay. Alright, so.
Sir, second to that one?
Second.
You seconded it.
Okay, it's been seconded, so I'm moved and seconded that the, the King George County School Board have a work session next Wednesday, February 17th, to review the in-person learning plans.
Yay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's okay, chair votes aye, motion carries.
Alright.
So, Ms., Ms., um, Ms. Gonzalez, could I make one other motion? That is to, um, change the policy to excuse, uh, students for, um, what was the term that you've mentioned?
Take your child to work day.
Take your child to work day, as an excuse.
Yes.
Yes.
Make a motion to get a draft policy.
You want to put it on the, let me have that to a discussion item for next time? I'll amend that to a discussion item for next time, for an excuse of take your child to work day.
For the, for our next regular meeting, or the work session?
Whichever you prefer.
Yeah, how about the next regular meeting?
Fine.
I think you could probably get Dr. Benson and staff to draft something up and just put it on a consent agenda or action item. So we can go ahead and go for it.
Okay. Send a motion. Did you make a motion, Dr. Collins, I'm sorry? Was that a motion to do that?
Well.
Okay, so on the, on a regular meeting, on the 27th, what was that?
I didn't make a motion, I'll table the motion.
Okay, that's fine, we'll add it to an agenda item, it's a good idea. Alright, moving on, next discussion item, um, the FY 22 budget.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, and to our community. It is that time of year when we, um, need to initiate our development and of a proposal to our local board of supervisors in terms of an FY 22, um, budget. And so to do that, to kick that off, uh, no pun intended with, uh, respect to the Super Bowl, I prepared a presentation to you, and I provided you materials that we traditionally provide at this first, uh, meeting. So I want to go through a, a presentation, I want to take, uh, time to review for you the budget survey results that we received from our staff. Uh, I want to review with you summary information in terms of projected revenue, and make some commentary there about the General Assembly, uh, and where they are with the state budget development. Uh, I'll then summarize for you, um, some key expenditures, um, that impact our FY 22 budget, and conclude with, with just kind of a, a synopsis of what our next step is moving forward in this process. So I don't know, John, I think you've got, uh, PowerPoint slides. Yes, you do, thank you. So, um, I think you're all aware, if not, uh, I want to make sure our public is aware that the development of this, of this budget is a, is a, um, is an inclusive process. We do our very best to include our staff, uh, certainly our principals and department heads are key figures in developing, uh, projected expenditures for next year. Uh, our central staff and myself, uh, take time to make sure we understand, on the revenue side in particular, what we will have to deal with, uh, in the coming year. And so, uh, you know, in, in seeking this information, um, one, one part, one tool that we use is an annual staff budget survey, and we give our, our staff an opportunity to, uh, to respond to prompts that I'm gonna go through with you here in a second, uh, and to also offer just open commentary. Uh, that commentary is made available to our principals, to our department heads, so that they can scan the comments that are submitted by staff and incorporate them into their, their planning for the next fiscal year. So we do invite all of our staff, not just our teachers, not just, uh, um, staff that are located in school buildings. We also include, um, our transportation folks, uh, itinerant staff, uh, our custodial folks, our maintenance folks. They're all invited to respond and, and participate in the survey. We also, I want to make one other note, we use the survey, or we have been using the survey to, to kind of evaluate the effectiveness of the current year's budget each year. So, uh, the questions or the prompts are, are given to employees, and they're asked to respond whether they strongly agree, whether they agree, um, on down the Likert scale, whether they disagree or whether they strongly disagree. And we do ask them, again, if they, if they disagree or strongly disagree, please provide us a description of why that is, so that we can hopefully then better address the need that we, we didn't address in the next budget year. So this first chart, um, talks about the participation, or gives you an idea as far as participation, who participated in the survey. Um, and it gives you a pie chart there with the percentages, uh, the numbers to the left. So this year, I'm happy to say, we actually had more, forty, forty-two more respondents than we did last year. Uh, so our response rate was 266 staff members, that's of about 600, 615 staff members. So we're approaching a 50% response rate in terms of our, our survey. And for those who are familiar with surveys, you know, a 30% or above is generally pretty good. We'd certainly like to have everybody, but 50% does give us a good proxy, uh, with which to, uh, to evaluate the effectiveness of our budget. We also, next slide, John, thank you, we also map it by work location. Uh, this gives you an idea, and, and we make sure that our, uh, distribution of responders, uh, correlates, or at least is representative of the different work locations and roles, uh, that we have in our school division. So on to the, to the, to the survey itself, uh, next slide, John. We ask our employees if they had the equipment that was needed for them to fulfill their job responsibilities. And we ask for their response with regard to, to how adequately do we meet their equipment needs. You can see there, from the distribution, that in our case, 91%, more than nine out of 10, indicated that they either strongly agreed or agreed that they had the equipment necessary, um, a high mark. And so we're pleased with that. Again, for those that disagreed or strongly disagreed, in many cases, they offered commentary. Those comments are being used by principals and department heads to try to help address and continuously improve our budget system. The next question dealt with supplies, next slide, please, John. Same, same prompt, uh, we asked if they had the supplies that they needed, uh, to fulfill their job responsibilities. These were, supplies is different than equipment, it's that supplies are generally those, uh, materials that are consumed in a single use or a single year. Happy to report here that 96% of our responders indicated that they in fact had the supplies necessary to do their job. So undoubtedly, in a very unique year, uh, that would include, um, items related to PPE and that type of thing. So, so I'm pleased to see that, uh, we had 96% of responders indicated they had what they needed in terms of supplies. Next slide, please, John. Next, we asked them about programs and services, um, whether they had those. Programs would be things such as, uh, APEX, our credit recovery system at the high school. Uh, so specific software programs, uh, that we may use for, for learning, software programs or applications that we may, we may use to coordinate services. Um, again, in this category, 96% of responders indicated they strongly agreed or agreed that they had access to the programs and services necessary to do their job. So I was pleased when I saw the results and compiled them. I think that's really, in aggregate, the highest response rate. Uh, and also the ratings were higher than typically are achieved in our annual survey. So undoubtedly, our, our hope to continuously improve this process and be inclusive, um, and to target, uh, the dollars that we want to be good responsible stewards of to, to address specific needs and our ability to, uh, to deliver for our students and families. Um, in the opinion of our staff, uh, we seem to be doing very, very well. So we've maintained the process, and that process then brings me to the point where I can present to you an initial draft, um, for your consideration in terms of an FY 22 budget. Let me transition then to revenue. John, do you have this, uh, okay? In your notebook, the next page talks about, uh, revenue, and this is a summary of the different types of revenue. Behind this, in the next tab in your notebook, there's, there are descriptors. And for the public, uh, this is posted on the board packet, you are welcome certainly to, uh, to look at the descriptors for each of, each of these different types of revenues. But schools are unique in that we don't have a single source of revenue. Um, in Virginia, the, the funding, uh, for schools is a partnership primarily between the state and the locality. So we are doing our work now in preparation for a presentation to our local board of supervisors. And our board of supervisors then considers that request, and they will ultimately make a decision in terms of the fiscal effort that will be afforded locally to help support, uh, our budget as a whole. So I'll just quickly go down the different types. We do, the bulk, uh, obviously falls along state and local revenue. Our state revenue is based on, right now, the governor's proposed budget, which was released in mid-December. Uh, as you know, if you've been reading in the news, both houses of the General Assembly are currently in deliberations, uh, and are preparing, I believe, Wednesday, to release their proposed budgets, um, for the respective houses, the House and the Senate. Typically, each of those, uh, those bodies will forward their proposed budget to the other. Uh, they will both, um, reject those budgets, but they reject them so that it can be forwarded to a joint committee, a House-Senate committee. And typically, that committee will come out with a compromise budget, uh, from the, the General Assembly. Uh, that compromise budget will generate a new calculation sheet for us, is what we call it. So right now, all of our revenue from the state side is, is based on the governor's proposed budget calculation sheet. When the new, um, compromised budget, so to speak, between the two houses comes out, that will then prompt a new calculation sheet for a new revenue total. And then ultimately, the governor then will review that compromised budget, so to speak, and, um, we will have the final calculation sheet. So I, I mentioned that because I don't want our public to under, to think that this, uh, state revenue forecasted dollar amount is, is the, um, is the final. Uh, there's a good bit of work to do downtown, uh, we are monitoring that closely, of course, and subsequent, uh, iterations of this budget for year review, and ultimately for the board of supervisors. Undoubtedly, there will be a change in the FY 22, um, projected state revenue, not only for King George County Schools, but for all school divisions across the state. Uh, the local revenue, I want to jump down, we do have other sources of revenue, uh, that are smaller. There are federal, uh, sources of revenue that we receive under different titles, Title I, uh, Title II, Title 6B in particular. There are miscellaneous revenues that we collect in terms of fees that are assessed, um, that type rentals, those types of things. But the bulk, uh, the second part of the, the bulk of the funding comes locally. This is the way Virginia is designed, it's a state-local partnership. You can see there then, as far as revenue needed to make this budget proposal, as it is in your notebook, whole would require $18,889,826 locally. That is a projected increase of one, approximately 1.3 million. Um, we have had years where we've entered budget cycles proposing more than 2 million in additional local state monies. So I'm relatively pleased to see that, given the costs I'm gonna talk to you about as far as the middle school transition, the inclusion of a, uh, of an employee increase to allow for a cost of living increase and their earned step, that that's where we are out of the gate with draft one. Again, I think that the state revenue may increase. If so, then, then I would expect a corresponding decrease in the local ask. So I, I know that that is, um, that's no knowledge to this board, but I wanted to take the opportunity to make sure our public understands, uh, our revenue picture and how it, uh, currently stands and how it may change here in the not-too-distant future.
Dr. Benson?
Yes, sir.
Uh, so it's based on a ADM of 4380?
Yes, sir, thank you very much, it's a good question. Um, the projection is, is, we've, we've kept our ADM the same as it was this year. We've not, ordinarily, there may be a projection of an increase, um, but we have kept our ADM at 4380 for the purposes of planning for next year. There is a provision, I'll mention a provision in the, um, in the proposed state budget, a whole harmless, so to speak, provision where it would, um, it would not, where school divisions would not be impacted negatively for the coming fiscal year due to any enrollment loss that may be associated with the pandemic. Uh, so that, that further helps underpin, uh, just, you know, the, the 4380. Um, I certainly don't think that we're proven to forecast enrollment growth at this point, not only for the, because of the, uh, the projections receive, we receive in terms of enrollment, but a little bit of the uncertainty, um, with whether we will realize, um, any loss of enrollment. Thank you, Mr. Collins, for bringing that up. So let me try to summarize for you just, uh, a few of the major, um, variables in play with this budget proposal as opposed to the current fiscal year. You can look, next slide, John, please, for our, thank you. So compensation, uh, it has been long, this, it has long been this, uh, board's goal to make sure that we are, uh, recruiting and we are maintaining, uh, quality employees, that we are keeping an eye on compensation as a factor in that goal. And accordingly, I, I would- And accordingly, I would like to propose that we. We include onto our salary scales, a one point three COLA. This is the percentage identified federally and that is being afforded to federal employees. Once that's one point three is being applied to our salary scales. I would recommend that employees then receive their earned step increase for their longevity. The cost, the approximate cost for doing that in our our next year's budget would be three hundred thirty five thousand, eight hundred eighty one dollars. In your packet, under the last tab, you have a document, and this is posted as well publicly. We call this document a budget builder. And the budget builder basically specifies every. Expense associated with what I just call stuff. These are, these are important instructional supplies. These are important contracted services. The others are expenditures. For not only consumable goods but equipment. And this section of our budget development process is completed by our principals. With our and our department heads. Who are responsible for a a tab within this document. So I know that I think all of you have been through this process. You understand. Again, this is indicative of the comprehensive or the inclusive nature. Of our development process. For our public. This is transparency in that you can see every line item or every proposed expenditure for next year. Or at least the category in which those expenditures are being proposed in terms of the stuff part of our budget. We have staff, we have personnel, and we have stuff. So we talk about staff. And stuff. The budget builder will address and provide you information, detailed information about. The stuff part. So that second bullet in the presentation where I say equipment, services and consumables. There is a request for four hundred sixty thousand, seven hundred seventy four dollars. In additional money to to equip. Our school division next year in terms of stuff. Lastly, I want to talk with you about additional staffing that is needed. We are very proud and very pleased that we now have. A beautiful building or addition to our current middle school. That will be able to host our sixth graders. This has been a goal for many years to bring our sixth grade from our elementaries. And and to configure a true middle school. Composed of grades six through eight. It's exciting. It does, it's cost effective in that it does build in capacity for the coming years at the elementary school, which would possibly then. Defer the need to build an entirely new elementary school for several years. We talked about that in proposal. Period for the new middle school. But bringing sixth grade, it does have some some costs in terms of expanding our staff to meet those needs. We no longer can take. One sixth or one third rather of a of a music teacher, one third of this teacher or that teacher. And have them become itinerant from the each each of the elementaries. To serve the sixth graders as they did when the sixth graders were aggregated with our K through five students. So for that reason, I've worked closely with Ms. Collins and Ms. Zierzki. She and or they have worked with other staff. To to look at, analyze, look at comparable. Comparably sized middle schools. To make recommendations to me in terms of additional staff that are needed to make this transition. Effective. And so you have a listing there. Of additional positions associated with that King George Middle School expansion. Secondly, I am going to come back to you. We have in past years been. Unfortunately, we've had to cut positions that were either that were in place. Essentially and supported us specifically, the Director of Administrative Services position that was cut two years ago. That we've not been able to reinstate. And our Communications Coordinator position that we had to cut. That again, we were not able to reinstate this past year. So I am asking that for your support. In reinstating those positions in this budget proposal. I'm also asking that we look at some clerical support in two areas. One. Is with Mr. Clift and the Maintenance Department. We have a good bit and it seems like an increasing amount of work. Involved with risk management with. Gary does a great job keeping up with a lot of the purchase orders, a lot of the clerical aspects of. Our Maintenance Department because he has no. Clerical support. In addition. And Ms. Fishers, you've seen from the updates that she's provided and the safety and the health areas. Those areas too are growing with responsibilities in terms of reporting. Purchases and things like that. So I think it prudent to request from you support. For a clerical position. To help support both the maintenance area and our health and safety, Health and Family Services Office. That additional staffing is obviously the bulk. Of of the additional differences in terms of spending. Altogether, that additional staffing would cost one point three million dollars. As outlined here in the presentation. Next slide, please. Thank you, John. I've outlined for you the the associated cost for each position. On the next slide of your presentation, I won't repeat the number because those simply represent. The positions I just summarized for you and their associated costs. Next slide, John. So this this final slide in the in the presentation is an important one because it does give you in our public a. A comparative view. From this current year FY twenty one to what we propose for FY twenty two. So you can see across the the six appropriation units. That we receive funding for both state and locally. You can see the differences from one fiscal year to the next. Down at the bottom, you'll see that for Fund two fifty. Fund two fifty simply includes everything but excludes school lunch, some of the the self-supporting programs. That are part of your budget pro budget book. Fund two fifty is where local funding is used to make that portion of our complete budget whole. So for Fund two fifty. We see at the bottom that. The local funding, the percentage of local funding for the current year. That's being afforded is thirty seven point five percent. And so I'll remind this board that at the time we went to the Board of Supervisors. It was right around the start of the pandemic. There was great speculation and speculation that had merit. That we were locally in for tough times in terms of. Our our tax revenues, the local Board of Supervisors' capacity to fund the request. And consequently, the the final allocation was actually three hundred thousand dollars less than the prior year. Nonetheless, that was that represented a thirty seven and a half percent. Portion of our our operating budget for Fund two fifty. Next year, as presented to you, you see the figure there and I've mentioned it once. But that would represent a thirty eight point seven percent. Effort or portion of the budget to make whole. You know, when I when I think back two years prior, I think we've been right around there. We've been thirty nine. We've been as high as forty, I think. So I I see this as relative good news. It's never easy to go. And ask for additional funding relative to the prior year from the Board of Supervisors. But I do believe it's well justified. I know it would be well spent in support of our educational operation. I'm very proud of our educational system. I appreciate your advocating. On behalf of that and your pride in our educational system and the the services we've returned to our taxpayers. I do promise we are good stewards of our taxpayers' money. Our budgeting process is transparent and any citizen can come and see. Not only the line items, but the the additional detail in the budget builder. I know that's been helpful in our to our community in the past years when there have been questions. Where they could actually see every every penny that's being planned and spent in school division's budget. For the next fiscal year. So that's an executive summary. Again, we have. We have factors that are beyond our control that are certainly going to play into. The coming weeks, there'll be amendments to that revenue document, I'm fairly certain. And so we will continue to keep you updated. We are happy to keep you informed, answer questions you may have. Moving forward. Typically, this board, the next step is to is to prepare. We'll host a public hearing. We advertise that public hearing. For folks to come and in our public and again, be inclusive in this process, make comments if they would like the board to consider something. And then from there, we then we then honestly begin preparing for the presentation to the Board of Supervisors. Typically, after the Board of Supervisors makes their recommendation known. This board then needs to reconvene. Perhaps into a work session or two to to make adjustments, to hear recommendations from me. As to where adjustments can be made to to balance our budget. In time for the new fiscal year. So with that, I appreciate your your. Your attention. I appreciate for those who are listening publicly. Their attention and understanding of this first draft as we begin this budget process. And I look forward to working with you over the coming weeks in preparation for our presentation to the Board of Supervisors.
So I, Madam Chair.
Mr. Collins.
So you know. When I first looked at the. Posed amounts of. One million, three hundred and seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty additional for the middle school. I was. I asked, why is that such a dip? Why can't you take all the sixth graders? Teachers and put them in the middle school? I was promptly explained to that. That it's a different program. It's a junior high program. So whereas. In sixth grade, they get phys ed once a week. In in the junior program, in the middle school, they get phys ed every day. And so these things, these. All these are needed because they don't have the electives like they have in sixth grade, they have in middle school, so it'd be awful, all of them. So that's, that's what I was properly explaining why these all these positions. So. I'm sure that because I my member of the Board of Supervisors asked me the same question. So I explained what I was explaining. So am I correct in that explanation?
You are correct. And in the context of PE. That's what I was loosely referring to in terms of right now, our sixth graders access PE. However, we have a PE teacher at each elementary school. So two. You know, that's across six levels, kindergarten through, or I'm sorry, seven levels, kindergarten through sixth grade. So to take, it's it's tough. It would be, you couldn't take one seventh of that person. And pull them out of the three different schools or pull three sevenths of a teacher. Instead, those sixth graders come up. We do offer PE and it's a popular elective at the eighth grade. Most of our students take it. And so. The staffing recommendations, you are correct. They run according to and currently I'm working with Ms. Collins. You know, we're looking at a master schedule. We're laying out sections that would be taught by the teachers that are being proposed. That's part of that process and it's. It's very involved and she's she's done an excellent job in working with her staff to try to lay out potentially what the master schedule will look like. The staff needed then to offer the the sections needed for the students that are moving into the middle school. But you are correct. It's not a, it's not as easy. Certainly, there will be. You know, at least the bulk of the current sixth grade teachers moving to the middle school. We wouldn't be hiring. We wouldn't keep, obviously, all of the teachers at the elementary school, have one less grade. And then hire all new teachers at the at the middle school. You know, there will be. Teachers who will who will move from the elementary level. To the middle school to fill out those needed positions. So that's a good point. I want to make that clear. These are not all new positions just for sixth grade.
Any further discussion on the FY twenty budget?
Yes, I'm sorry. Quick question. I I see that our operations and maintenance. Cost decreased. Is that a typo or is that real?
Help me.
In your. The FYI by appropriation unit. Twenty one to twenty two. Operations and maintenance went from forty two, forty nine to twenty to forty one, eighteen oh eighty seven. Is that correct?
I can double check that for you. I believe it is correct though, but as far as an explanation, I can come back to you and.
That's that's just curious. I guess with any with any number to go down, although perhaps with the shifting. Changes we we've made, then perhaps we are saving money. That would be a good thing.
And certainly you can reference, there are both, there's a there's a maintenance section. In the the comprehensive budget document and then you can also look in the budget builder.
Right.
Maybe corresponding.
I just wanted to double check on that. An additional question, I know that we are we are funding, we are requesting funding for an additional counselor. At the. The middle school. I guess I would be remiss to my profession if I didn't say that although the SOQs don't call for it. That it would be worthwhile to consider even a half-time additional social worker.
Actually, Ms. Hock, I'll just in the proposed legislation or the proposed budget attached or legislation attached to the budget. That is a ratio. The ratio that's proposed there then would require us to hire the additional counselor. It also addresses SOQs is a prompting factor in the media specialist. And the media specialist parapro as well because of the increased student notice in middle school.
Yes, and I I want to make sure that we understand that I'm saying an additional social worker. Even if it's a half-time social worker.
They did make it full-time last two years.
Yes, we did. But I I still think with the increased sixth grade coming up and. Knowing that middle school is certainly a. Difficult transition. Ultimately, that it would be wise to see if we could afford to have additional support in that area.
I think it's hot. Ms. Panter, do you have a comment?
Yeah, so the, what was that on? Oops. So, Dr. Benson. Could you look at the salaries or maybe I'm missing something? Maybe it adds a little bit more. So the the numbers. That are presented on on number ten under the salaries. Are those, do those include like any healthcare coverage and stuff? Because they just seem relatively high.
Yes, thank you. It's a good question. I assume you're looking at the presentation, the listing.
So they would just include taxes and and insurance.
You're you're absolutely correct. That those estimated costs include not only salary but all of the benefits, the. The healthcare, their VRS. FICA.
That's the.
All of the fringe costs associated with those positions.
And would any of the special education teachers be coming ever from the elementary schools to the middle school? Because we have an additional special ed teacher as well.
Yes, not only. Teaching. Staff, all of that will be be contingent on IEPs. Certainly, but there will be a number of paraprofessionals as well, most likely coming from the elementary. To the middle school and special education staffing. You know, is is driven by the IEP needs of our students in in many cases in the aggregate, you know, but also we have some students who require. One-to-one assistance to be successful in the school days. So in many cases, those are parapros who would be coming with those students.
And then just one more question. So I I understand that you just can't. Kind of take the sixth grade teachers and put them in the middle school and I get all that. So but somebody had brought up a question. So. And you bring up the. The PE teacher. So if the PE teacher no longer has to teach the sixth grade, do they just kind of take the other classes and make them more classes or do they have fewer classes at that point in time?
We're talking about the middle school?
No, so if the elementary school teachers.
The elementary.
So they were teaching, say, two sixth grade classes of their eight eight periods, then now they only have six periods. So do they take the other six periods and disperse some over the eight periods or have any?
I have to, you know, I'd have to ask the elementary principals to see what the impact. Might be. I'm certainly, I think it would make a PE teacher at the elementary school their day.
I'm sure they. Yes, I'm sure.
But that's that's what I can ask the elementary principals and get you an answer in terms of what the potential impact might be at the elementary school. In terms of maybe additional offerings or lower class sizes, that type of thing.
I think that that would all kind of go with all of the specials, not just PE, but you know, art and STEM and you know. Music as well.
So how how many additionals? How many sixth graders?
I I I think there are three hundred and close to three hundred, right around three hundred.
And so what, how many seventh and eighth grades? What's what's that capacity now?
Seven hundred and twenty six.
Is that total?
Across both grades?
All three grades?
No, no, that would be two grades, I would believe.
Middle school, seven hundred and twenty six.
Right now, seventh and eighth.
Right now, today.
So then it'd be another three hundred, so it'd be over a thousand.
I I don't think we're projected to be over a thousand. We're definitely nine hundred or a little over nine hundred.
Closing in on.
Yeah.
So the. I'd be interested in how many. What's the actual enrollment? Hopefully, it's. It's higher than the ADM.
Division one, you're talking about division?
And the equipment service consumables, the additional. Four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. I see some stuff in the budget builder, you know, but it's kind of nickel and dime. I don't see that much. There must be something in there. An additional four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. When I look.
A good bit of it is the nickels and dimes add up. You might look at text. A good bit of it is the nickels and dimes add up. You might look at textbooks. I know we have a little heavier textbook adoption here. But I'd, I'd encourage, certainly encourage you to go through the budget builder because that's where, where that will obviously be reflected.
Do we currently have any, um, social workers or counselors that are transferring between schools? I know we used to have a social worker that would bounce around to the schools, but.
Was the question?
Share social worker. We have one at each.
I think they're based at schools.
They're based at schools. Great.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right.
I appreciate you receiving this tonight and giving me the time to go through it with you. And again, I look forward to working with you in the coming weeks. You know, we'll have a good bit of, uh, discussion, I'm sure about line items and questions the board may have. I'm happy to bring, uh, staff to elaborate on anything you may have. Uh, again, we'll be posting, um, notice for a public hearing, an opportunity for the public to, to comment, uh, on the budget. And I think, and we'll certainly need to reconvene. I'm sure after the board supervisor has a chance to receive our presentations. Thank you again.
Thank you, Dr. Benson. Moving on to our information items. So do we have any committee reports? Ms. Panzera?
Um, I'm sorry, what, what did you, what did you just say?
Committee reports?
Committee reports, no, ma'am.
Ms. Hock? Ms. Oliver? Mr. Collins?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Well, I have two committee reports. Um, so the technology advisory committee met on January twenty-eighth. Uh, so a lot of good information have been a while, obviously since the committee met, but Mr. Hopper gave the committee an, um, extensive updates on everything that has occurred during this challenging year. So from details and resulting actions from the ransomware incident, updates on the number of hotspots. Um, a discouraging theme common to both the hotspots and the Chromebook topics was the number of devices that have been lost, broken or stolen from the division. Getting Chromebooks repaired is challenging right now, um, as many of us have seen elsewhere, uh, since the pandemic has come upon us. The Chromebooks and replacement parts are unavailable and on backorder. Turns out that some families are actually on rounds two and three of Chromebooks and hotspots and have not paid for repairs. Um, on a lighter note, Mr. Hopper gave an update on different remote desktop options that have been pursued in order to meet course requirements for some courses right now during virtual instruction. They've settled on Citrix, which is affordable, straightforward and versatile. Um, and gave some examples of how that has benefited division to date, um, even in recent, recent weeks. Lastly, he gave an overview of the Chromebook refresh plans with the middle school getting refreshed this year. Although he did comment that the six hundred and fifty-five Chromebooks that were ordered for the middle school in July have still not arrived. Um, the meeting concluded with some brainstorming on how to handle Chromebook collection over the summer. And then on, then last week on February third, the Title One Advisory Committee met. Um, as we know, Title One funding is based on the number of students who qualify for free introduced lunches. Um, so actually this year, however, applications for free introduced lunches have been down. Um, so fewer numbers due to the fact that federal legislation has been provided, um, is providing free meals. Uh, so the funding's been provided, um, as a result of federal legislation providing free meals to all students this year. Although we're not unique, it's a common, it's a phenomenon currently being experienced by divisions across the Commonwealth. Um, so alternatively, CEP numbers from social services can be used to generate the eligible percentage of the student population. And then they did share, the committee, um, they announced that despite being curbside this year, the King George Elementary Family Engagement Event. This year it had the highest turnout ever, which was pretty cool. So some really great news and some great lessons learned about accessibility for future events, um, whether we're in a pandemic or not. So that was very interesting. And that concludes my, uh, committee reports. So moving on to our superintendent's report, Dr. Benson, if you have anything to add?
Thank you. Just two quick items, Madam Chair, members of the board. First, um, I had a chance to visit all of our elementary schools and I want to express my gratitude. Um, to all of our, our elementary staff members and leadership there, uh, the support staff. Um, we've had a great first couple of weeks with our kindergarten to second grade students. It's been, it's been gratifying to see the kids back, uh, in their classrooms and learning. And I appreciate my colleagues, uh, so very much because they've gone the extra mile. They continue to do so. Both those who are teaching, uh, virtually, who continue to engage students and do their very best, uh, in a virtual platform. And now those that are, um, engaging students in person. So I appreciate everybody's effort and that respect and support. Um, secondly, it is, uh, um, in Virginia, uh, February is School Board Appreciation Month. And so we are certainly planning something to express our appreciation for you come the second meeting of this month. Uh, but I didn't want to miss the opportunity to thank this board and really all boards throughout Virginia for your, um, your sacrifices, your commitment, um, your perseverance, um, your patience oftentimes. It, it does not go unnoticed. And, and I know that this year in particular, school boards have had a, a heavy burden to balance decisions, to balance input from constituents. Uh, I, it's, it's an understatement to say that that has been a difficult, difficult aspect of, of this board and every board's school year. But, um, I want you to know that I do appreciate greatly, um, the varied viewpoints. I appreciate your willingness to engage and debate each other thoughtfully on behalf of our community and our students. So thank you for your service and, um, we'll look forward to then expressing it more concretely, you know, at the next school board meeting. But thank you all and, uh, happy School Board Appreciation Month.
Thank you, Dr. Benson.
Thank you.
All right. So, um, next we'll move on to our, conclude with our board comments. Ms. Panzera?
Um, yes. Okay. So, um, first I'd just like to say that I, I can't agree, um, I cannot agree more with the public comment when they say that, uh, we need to get our kids back to school and we need to do that now. Uh, we need to set a plan and we need to stick to it. There are no excuses anymore. We have seen the data, heard the professionals express the need. There should not be any more reasons for us to delay the return to in-person learning. So let's do this. Um, I also would like to retract my vote for the approval of policy J E C dash R point two from A to yay from yay to nay. Um, I do not believe that this policy gives every student the right to a fair and equitable and free education, which we are bound by the state statute to provide. I know that I reached out to Dr. Benson and asked for legal guidance on that and, and I, we did have some legal guidance on that, but I still don't, don't really approve. Uh, think that that is, uh, the right thing that we should have done. Um, I also, the handout I presented tonight, uh, should be included in the board packet for this evening. Um, I'm not surprised that it was not permitted to be presented, nor do I expect the opportunity to present it in the future. So I would like to mention that slide five shows that the two other localities that have had in-person learning since August, their C to C core indicators were lower. Louisa and Prince Georges was comparable. However, their student enrollment is thirty percent higher. So if you took that into account, their indicator would be lower as well. So to restate what my research and, um, concrete data shows is that schools who were in person since August have a more favorable modality than our current modality as outlined by Dr. Benson's presentation. And anyone who would like a copy of that presentation, it should be on the website with tonight's packet or you can, um, email and I will send you a copy. Also in the presentation, um, I showed the fail rate for our K through twelve students. Um, I would like to go ahead and share that quickly with everybody. Um, the high school has a fail rate of one thousand, two hundred and seventeen percent of an increase. The middle school has a forty-five percent increase and the elementary school has a seventy percent increase in fail rate as opposed for the first, in comparison to the first semester of two thousand nineteen to the first semester of two thousand, um, twenty. Also in there is the data in my presentation, the last three slides is the data that outlines, um, all of the different grades. It was kind of, uh, heartwarming a little bit because some, there were more As and fewer Bs, more Cs, fewer Ds. So it kind of like went all over the board, but the fail rate, um, still is very, um, very alarming. Um, so you know, I think that that proves that when Ms. Harris stated that the need to get our kids back to school was a dire situation. Um, it is a cost all grades. So the sooner and the more in-person learning time is planned, the better. So I do hope that this board will do what is right and not repeat the past and again, fail our community and rob our children of an equality and well-rounded education and vote to bring the kids back as soon as possible. Um, that's, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Panzera. Ms. Hock?
Yes. Um, there is so much to say and I am known for being long-winded, so I will try not to be tonight. I do want to begin this with a very positive note. February is also School Counselors Month. And last week, I believe, was what had been celebrated in the past as School Counselors Appreciation Week. And that has always been a high priority, uh, both in my previous position with the school system and, and in my mind. Um, now, School Social Worker Month is coming up next month in March, so we'll, we'll approach that. But I, I want to say a special thank you to all the school counselors, especially for this year. School counselors have had to reinvent themselves as have most of the staff, but in, in very different ways. School counselors are used to, to contact and if necessary hugs and pats on the back and, and lunch with individuals. And sometimes stern discussions about what would your grandma say about that? But school counselors are there for students, um, as, as one of our callers said earlier, s- school is a sanctuary for students. Both students who are in dire physical need and students who simply need a place to be affirmed. Because students do come to know themselves through their schools and through, through their friends and through their, uh, staff around them. So I want to say again, a very special thank you to school counselors. Um, I, um, we had a lot of anger and frustration vented tonight, both, um, within our, our board. Um, but, but from, um, participants as well. And, and I, I will, and, and certainly we are always open to hearing what we need to hear from our constituents of, of all ages and, and all roles. I do want to say very clearly that, uh, anger and frustration directed at our superintendent or our staff is inappropriate. It's wrong-minded. Um, we are working this problem, um, with as many, um, people as we can possibly muster. Our superintendent has worked long hours, his staff has worked long hours in roles that they were not even beginning to understand last January. Um, I, I think we need to pause before we say things and practice, um, careful thinking. Um, as far as we, the board members, we are simply members of the community who have stepped up to fill these roles. It is time-consuming and at times unbelievably difficult, as this year has proven. We all will go away, some sooner than later and in multiple ways. But your words of anger and frustration will linger as your legacy. Is, is that what you want? Or do you want to be part of the, the solution and part of the positivity? That adds to the resilience that our children will desperately need to get through this next portion of their life. Uh, I, I want to, uh, support in many ways, Ms. Panzera's concern a- about the learning loss. And we've just begun to refer to the learning loss. We know that it is happening. We, we see it in our homes. We see it in the grocery stores. We, we hear the frustration of the students. I, I get information letters from the students regularly and I, and I so appreciate that. We hear from the staff, from the custodians, from the bus drivers. Um, but we need to understand that this is not going to be fixed tomorrow. It's not going to be fixed March fourth. And come twenty twenty-three, I'm hoping that whoever is sitting on this board will have a better handle on understanding, um, what has happened and how to go forward than we have right now. Um, I do want to say, since it's School Board Appreciation Month, that, that I do appreciate my colleagues up here. We, we sometimes disagree a lot. Uh, we all respect each other. I, I know that. I have seen the respect of each individual up here for, for both me and my family and each other. So when we are discussing, we get passionate and, and we get emotional. And, um, that's a good thing. Um, the other piece that I'd like to say is that in our discussion, uh, tonight, you have heard us debate about, um, plans and changes and, uh, things that were on the agendas in October and November and December and January. And yes, there are changes going on, but the change has to happen. We have to be attuned to the plan that we had in October that may or may not be appropriate for March. But that's what we depend on our, uh, experts, our staff and our superintendent to advise us about. So I want to say thank you to all of my fellow board members for their passion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hock. Ms. Oliver?
Thank you. I, uh, echo many of the things Ms. Hock just said, um, and especially about school counselors because they're really important part of our buildings all the way around. But on a different note, I'd like to share some positive news. Um, I want to thank the couple of Girl Scouts that emailed me this week that are working on their democracy badge and took the time to reach out to me. Um, and asked for my input or my advice or whatever about, um, being on a school board and what makes me happy about being on a school board, which I told them was that highlighting and recognizing and honoring students' achievements is one of the favorite things that I love to do. So I'm gonna do a little bit of that right now. Just want to share that, um, King George Middle School, we had three hundred and twenty-six honor roll or distinguished honor roll students out of seven hundred and twenty-six. I might have that number wrong. I was connecting, correcting in the text recently, but almost close to half of our population of the middle school earned honor roll or distinguished honor roll for this last marking period. At the high school, we had six hundred and eighteen students earn honor roll, distinguished honor roll, honorable mention. The high school also named ninety-one students as outstanding foxes, and those are students that are nominated by their teachers for outstanding effort or achievement or improvement. Um, our DECA chapter recently had two students moving on to international competitions based on their school-based enterprise of stocks fox. And we also had three students through our theater department who received the Hamilton Educational Program Award and will be able to go see Hamilton when that's able to happen in person. And also maybe have the opportunity to get on the stage and interact with the characters in that arena. So we've had a lot of really good things going on, um, even though there's a lot of negativity and there's a lot of criticism. And I know students are suffering virtually, but we also have those that are excelling and those that need to be recognized and honored. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver. Mr. Collins?
Almost eight years ago, I took an oath to, um, that was thirty-five years ago. Um, I took an oath to, um, King George Schools to represent our constituents, our students and all the citizens of King George County. I continually support the in-person, um, learning and we need to get back to school as soon as possible. I've given all my reasons in the past. Dr. Benson, I would like to know how many, um, students are participating in all school sports at every level and all the parks and rec. I'd like to thank Ms. Fisher, um, for her continued, um, updates on the, uh, vaccines and, and, um, information put out to the school employees. Um, she's done a great job with this, um, with her, that and her other items. Um, I'd like to also, um, congratulate Jane Faith and Wyatt on their, uh, outstanding performance in the Hamilton Education Program National Competition. The budget's going to be, um, a tough one this year. There's no doubt about that. That's what we, that's, uh, one of our primary responsibilities. Um, so, um, I would. I would I hope the citizens will take the time, opportunity to go through the, the budget builder. That answers a lot of questions of, of how the money's spent. Oftentimes I'm asked about what monies are spent and how. And so that gives me a resource in order to answer those questions. The, I'd like to thank all our school board members for their, for their stepping up to, to be a member of the school board. This year's been very interesting, to say the least. Yes, Ms. Hawk, there, there are, all the members here are, have, have passion. There's no about that. But I still a little upset about the dereliction of duty thing. I'd like to thank all y'all and hope we can keep things moving along in a, in a forward fashion and hope to see y'all back in school March 4th.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Collins.
So I would like to begin by saying that I agree with Ms. Hawk that anger directed at any of our staff members is highly inappropriate. Our staff and employees have worked tirelessly this year against unbelievable odds and done an amazing job, each and every one of them. And for that, I commend them. On Thursday, January 28th, I thoroughly enjoyed participating in Ms. Anderson's high school government classes and chatting with her students, along with a few of our other counties, our county's other elected officials, including Ms. Tolliver. So thank you to Ms. Anderson for the invite. I thoroughly enjoyed that. On Tuesday, February 2nd, I participated in the V S B A training for new board chairs. As usual, there was a lot of really good material presented and reiterated. But one that I did want to highlight was a discussion on parliamentary procedure and the adoption of Robert's rules. I know this board has had robust discussions about adopting Robert's rules. And I thought it worth noting that the professional registered and licensed parliamentarian, Ms. Mary Luce Deviney, who regularly presents at the V S B A training sessions, indicated that Robert's rules should be adopted in board bylaws and bylaws should stand until they are revisited. I understand that the bylaws committee has been working well together, and though I was denied an opportunity to participate in that committee, I am looking forward to the committee's outbrief. As I'm told that the committee has a final draft, I plan to propose a work session in March to review. I wanted to reiterate to the board that I sent out as a reminder, the King George School Board Governance Norms and Protocols document that we developed jointly as a board at our training session last fall. I encourage my colleagues to refer to the process identified within the document for requesting items be added to meeting agendas. We all get V S B A legislative update emails, and one last week reminded me that I've been meaning to bring this up for discussion. The particular rail that prompted me to mention this was pertaining to a potential mandate for both in-person and virtual instruction to be offered to every student beyond, even beyond the current pandemic. Not to debate that at the moment, but I do not know if the board has ever collectively sent correspondence to any of our legislators in response to proposed legislation, but I will not be surprised if we begin seeing more such legislative activity of this nature in the future, considering the significant changes to education that have occurred during the COVID-19 pandemic. We often talk about the effects of unfunded state mandates on localities, especially small ones such as our own, and I think it would be prudent and responsible for us to discuss how to collectively address such topics and advocate accordingly for King George County schools with our state officials. And lastly, I would like to thank Ms. Pansiera for copying the rest of the board on her response to a constituent's email after our last meeting. I would also like to remind her that accusing fellow board members of pushing personal agendas is slanderous and insulting. If there's one thing this board can agree upon, it is that we are all well aware of the need for children to be in school. Now, on a final note, when it comes to requesting meetings and agenda items, I would like to remind her that at the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic, she was asked numerous times during her tenure as chairperson to schedule meetings or work sessions to discuss school reopening plans, and she repeatedly refused. Content's await on direction from the governor. And this time, do we have a motion to move into closed session?
Pursuant to State Code Section 2.2 dash 3711 point A point one, for the purpose of discussion, consideration of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, stipends, and retirement of employees of the school system, I move that we enter closed session.
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We're now in closed session. Okay. Do we have, okay, so we have a motion to return to open session?
I don't have it. Kristen, do you have it?
I don't have it either.
I move that the King George County School Board return to open session and certify that pursuant to State Code 2.2 dash 3712D, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the public body.
Second, certify.
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 Certify. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Motion is accepted. And now do we have a motion to adjourn? So we have a motion to approve the action resulting from closed meeting?
I move that we approve the action resulting, I mean, approve personnel as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to second that we approve personnel as presented. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We're now adjourned.
Thank you for being here.